...the Lind City Council, Matt the Clerk, roll call.
Counsel Biden.
Yes.
Present Counsel Cahill.
Present.
Present Counsel Capano.
Present.
Present Counsel Chakoudas.
Present.
Present Counsel Palucci.
Present.
Present Counsel Creighton.
Present.
Present Counsel Sia. Absent Counsel Ford. Absent Counsel Lozey. Absent Counsel Annette.
Present.
Present Counsel Trahan.
Present.
Present. In present.
We received word from Counselor Ricky Ford that he and his wife are visiting their son, Buddy, who I believe is currently in the Navy. Currently in the Navy, so spending some time with us up before he ships out. We'll have a rise for a moment of silence. We're joined today by the Troop 80 of the Knights of Columbus, and we've asked them to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, gentlemen, on your cue. I believe the Troop is here to witness government action, and they're trying to obtain a badge in civil engagement, right?
Citizenship.
Citizenship of the community. I think based on you leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, I think you, I would say you satisfied those requirements. That's just me talking, I'm on the charge.
And that's.
Okay. We have a motion to accept the meeting minutes for the May 26th. Meeting, Counsel. Which he has made the motion, and seconded by Captain Salvador, and all those affairs. I suppose nobody eyes have it. We have a presentation now.
Yes, we do. Presentation by the Girls Inc.
Girls Inc. are here to provide a presentation. I would invite you up to the podium where we would speak, and I will put up your PowerPoint presentation, and the floor will be yours. Absolutely. If you'd like whoever's speaking to come up here, where there's also, next to the computer, there's a microphone as well as a podium, so if you want to work out, we all communicate to us from wherever you'd like. People at home will all be able to hear you. You have lots of good things to say unless you're speaking to the microphone. It's like The Price is Right.
So, good evening, you guys. My name is Lana Moore, and I'm a junior at McCall School High School.
Hello, I'm Delisa Costa. I'm a freshman at Lynn English.
My name is Phoebe Jean. I'm a recent Glasgow graduate.
And my name is Jennifer Duran, and I'm a junior at McCall School. And we are a civic engagement group in Girls Inc. called Part of the Solution, and we're going to talk to you about the tobacco industry and its effects on teens. So, start off with the 84 youth movement. This program is dedicated to increasing the percentage of teens in, I mean, around the country who do not smoke tobacco. There are over eighty chapters in the state, and the 84 stands for the eighty-four percent of teens who do not smoke, and that was at the beginning of the program. But now, that number has risen to eighty-nine. So that's a big accomplishment for the program. We're going to start off by telling you what we're going to be talking about tonight. So first, we're going to talk about why tobacco is important in our community, the three main tactics that tobacco companies use to target youth, which are packaging, availability, and pricing, the tactics that we're using to fight these, and why we need your help. Adolescents are especially harmed by tobacco because, as youths, heart rates are still developing, and when you mix in tobacco, it definitely slows down cell development and brain function. Adolescents who begin to smoke tobacco get addicted to nicotine more faster and harsher than an adult does. This nicotine can lead to other, to other physical and emotional damages, like future alcohol and/or other drug addiction, panic attacks, and depression. The tobacco industry relies on the youth, on the user's impulses to buy these products. That's why they use their tactics, like we mentioned before. Adolescents are structured to encourage experimentation and gather experience. The industry encourages these impulses, and we're going to talk about how they do that. So packaging. We're going to hand it into Phoebe.
So, the first tactic that the tobacco industry uses against youth is packaging. It might be kind of hard to pick out the tobacco products that is in this little collage we have here, if you take a look at it. So, mixed in with the different candies and kind of fruity flavors was these tobacco products, and it kind of goes to show how tricky it is to decide which tobacco products are used to targeting youth, basically. The packaging that they use for tobacco products is very flashy, and it kind of confuses youth because it encourages to buy on impulse because the flavor, the flavors are fruity, and they're colorful, and they're attractive to us. Would you guess that any of these are tobacco products? Kind of looks like mint or chapstick or something like that. And the packaging promotes flavors, and the flavors are appealing to kids, like mango, bubblegum, and it disguises the bad taste that tobacco really adds. And also, one of the most important things is that it's trashing our communities. These pictures were taken near schools and parks where kids are hanging out all the time, and once we try to clean it up, it just ends up like that again because that's how badly people are using tobacco, and it's trashing our community. The next tactic that the tobacco industry uses is availability. So, tobacco is sold everywhere. It can be in the stores, gas stations, supermarkets, you know. The availability sends a message that tobacco is fine, it's normal, it's a perfectly okay thing to use. So many venues make it difficult to control the products and enforce laws. Responsibility lies within tobacco companies. As long as tobacco companies continue to target youth with cheap, attractive products, young people will get them. So, here's a map. If you, the blue dogs are schools, and the red pins are tobacco wheel tailors, so you can see how close the tobacco wheel tailors are to multiple schools. And if you remember, me and a couple other of my dozen girls went on a walk with Councilman Brendan Creighton in, I don't know where he went, okay. We walked, hello. We walked down Union Street, and referred to these packages, it's called City of Lynn Tobacco Merchants. The last page. It says, "So highlighted in blue in your packet are the fourteen permitted tobacco merchants on Union Street alone, all within a half-mile span. This is approximately a ten-minute walk, which means there's more than one wheelchair per minute as you walk." So there's ten wheel trailers just on Union Street. And highlighted in yellow are the permitted tobacco merchants in all of Ward One. In this case, there are only fourteen. So there are fourteen tobacco wheel tailors total in Ward One, and fourteen tobacco wheel tailors in total just on Union Street. All right. So, they attract kids by putting tobacco advertising close to the ground because, obviously, children are shorter than adults, so they will see those advertisements if they are lower to the ground at their eye level. Now, as I said before, they're, they put them close to schools because kids go to school, they see the advertisements as they're walking to school. They advertise them as toys, or they put them near toys inside convenience stores. And so, next time you're at a convenience store, you probably noticed these things. You probably haven't before, but now you see them. And they target youth because if they, if they get a child addicted to tobacco now, they'll have a customer for the rest of their lives. So, the third major tactic is pricing. So as you look here, which product would you think is cheaper? All right, so, on the far left, you see the chapstick is $1.99, and a pack of $18.39, which is basically, it's basically like cigarettes, but they're like smaller cigars. You guys can see that? And they're only about a few cents cheaper than a chapstick. And you see here, a cigarette is sixty-nine cents compared to a song on iTunes. And here, a magazine, which is trending through our, our youth society, like everyone loves a magazine, everyone loves to look at fashion, especially girls, and then you have snooze, snooze, which is the same price. And the far right, you have a pack of gum, which is more expensive than one cigarette. Price is the most important tactic. Here, we say, no one could afford a pack of cigarettes, but you got some spare change for like one cigarette or a cigar. And here again, like, Delise spoke up before, the availability and where signs are posted near the ground. So, let's say a little kid walking by, three feet eye level, it's basically like subliminal messages coming in. So they've always seen this when they're little, the signs, so when they grow up, they're more likely to get or buy a tobacco product. And here again, this is like a promotion, so four cigarette rolls are for ninety-nine cents, four, meaning that an individual cigarette roll is twenty-five cents. And again, like I said before, it's very easy to find spare change or ask your parents for some coins, you can just go out and buy a cigarette for twenty-five cents. And here, it shows the price increases are effective, although they're on OTPs. And again, price is very important. Singles or mini-packs are the cheapest products, and shoe is still much less than cigarettes. And again, cheap products produce or encourage impulse buys. So, and here, a few of those girls, we went out and we assisted our advisor on the SARS assessment. Again, as you can see, it's a standardized tobacco assessment for retail segments, and we surveyed about eighteen out of the twenty-four stores that was given to us on the list, and we basically observed the packaging, availability, and pricing.
So, a few of the other things that we noticed were, every store we observed sold tobacco products, and they were fully visible to each customer. Less than one quarter of the observed stores displayed graphic health signs. These are signs that the stores are supposed to have, they're supposed to warn people about the effects, and less than one quarter of the stores had them. Almost forty percent of the stores observed had cigarette ads hung three feet on the floor. That's a really big percentage. Every observed store sold flavored cigarette rolls, little cigars, and nearly every store sold non-flavored bourbon to this product. Almost every store, these products were advertised for less than one dollar. Again, that goes back to pricing, one of the three tactics that the tobacco companies use. Also, if you look at the chart over here, six percent of these stores accepted a wait. What, what this means is that families with their children are going into these stores, and they're seeing these advertisements, they're seeing these advertisements three feet above ground, and that's just more customers for tobacco companies.
So, according to this table, eighty-two point four percent of these stores that we observed had advertised cigarette rolls or liquor cigars for less than one dollar. So again, it goes with the pricing and availability. There are eleven point eight percent of stores that displayed their tobacco products or OTPs near, and within twenty inches of toys. So again, it goes with the subliminal messages, it's targeting the youth, and again, with the eleven point eight percent that have the ads hung within three feet of the floor.
In the chart, it just kind of goes to show how, how the selling of these cigars really is impacted. Like, for example, ninety-four point one percent of these stores sold singles, cigarette rolls, and cigars. Like we said, those are products that are sold for sixty-nine cents, ninety-nine cents, less than a pack of gum. And these flavored products, I mean, what kind of adult is going to want to buy a bubblegum or a strawberry mango mix? Like, these are obviously targeted to youth with their attractive flavors and packages.
So, here, we're asking, what can you do to all help this? So we're basically asking to cap the number of tobacco licenses in Lynn, since Lynn has about one hundred and fifty-two, I believe, tobacco retailers in just the city. Also, we're asking to pass ordinances that no single cigar will be sold for less than two dollars and fifty cents, and any package of two or more are no less than five dollars. And also, to consider raising the minimum legal sales age to twenty-one. I mean, Lynn has already had or passed ordinances or regulations on these cigarettes in age, so why can't you be consistent? So, are there any questions?
Yeah, I actually did. You can.
Absolutely, please.
Thank you. That was a wonderful presentation, girls, and it's really insightful. My question to you guys is, because you have kids and your friends smoke, how do they buy the cigarettes, like, when they're eighteen years old? Like, do friends buy the cigarettes for their kids, or what, you know, how does it, you guys see how that, friends buyers are? Like, are the stores, are the stores not selling to the underage kids? Are they, or?
Okay, so, my parents actually own a corner store, so I see teens coming in all the time, and even though I can't sell the cigarettes, I can always ask for an ID, and I usually do, and a lot of times, they're minors and they just don't have one, and I see these people in school all the time, and I know that they're not eighteen years old. And a lot of stores do sell these cigarettes to kids, they don't ask for IDs, which they should, and that's just a lack of, a lack of, lack of regulation with the stores, especially, like we mentioned earlier, some of them don't even have these health warning signs that they're supposed to have, visible for the people who come into these stores. So we actually do see these things happening all the time, yes.
I just have a question for the city solicitor, I hope you have the answer for this, Attorney Vitale. Do we ever have, like, I know we go out, we have to stain things like the underage drink, do we also do that?
I think so. I'm pretty sure we do, yeah. Yeah, we've done that. Now, have you girls ever like gone out, when you're doing all these studies, have you ever gone and tried to buy a pack of cigarettes, and do they sell them to you? When you go onto the store, so?
So, part of the eighty-four movement, there is another part where you can be a youth inspector. So there are children or people of sixteen and seventeen age that actually apply to be a youth inspector, and they actually assist a, I believe, a compliance check, and they go out and they test on the stores to see if they would sell to these minors, and there are actually some cases where the stores actually just like, they sell to minors.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Counsel.
Real quickly, in terms of, when you talk about capturing tobacco licenses, are there other, are there other communities, I guess, match up with?
When you look at this handout right here. Municipal Tobacco Control Technical Services Program. That's the title of the handout. And it basically tells you the municipalities with minimum legal smoking. And it has the address next to the cities or towns that are in.
And like we mentioned, the eighty-four movement, it has over eighty chapters, and we have an event annually where these chapters get together and we talk about what they're doing in their cities, and a lot of these chapters have gotten with tobacco license capped in their cities, which is what we've been trying to do with our city as well. It's been a success.
Any more questions?
Hold up and finish. Andres Redren, as some of you know, and I'm the director for the North Shore Cape Van Tobacco Control Program, and we are, in fact, the agency within the city that goes out and does conscientious checks, and what the young people are talking about is true, there are some of our retailers in the city, of which there's one hundred and fifty-two currently, who have sold, there are consequences, and I will say that the city does a good job with consequences. First sale is a hundred-dollar fine, and then after that, it's a fine and a suspension if they've repeated within a certain timeframe. However, we have another big issue, which is social sources, and that is that within our school systems, or even siblings or friends, you have someone who's eighteen years old, and they'll give them one, or in the case of the cigarette rolls which you have in front of you, again, social sources is a big component of where they're obtaining these products. And that's one of the reasons for the age twenty-one. On your list, we address this three list that you guys have that we provide, and one is for how many communities have raised the age to twenty-one. One of them is a list of what communities have the cigar pricing and packaging in place, and one of them addresses the, oh, no, not the flavors. Cigar pricing and packaging on your list, right there. Yeah, mostly all, oh, thank you. I'm sorry. The twenty-one, the cigar pricing and packaging, oh, and the capex, which Salem and Saugus both have, and Salem and Saugus have all of these within their regulation. And just to bring to the attention also quickly, we provided the subcommittee with this list of twenty-one on April twenty-first, and there were forty-two communities that had raised the minimum legal sales age to twenty-one, and it's not even two months later, and we're up to fifty-five communities. That's in fifty-four, but damn, it's just rolled it all in these, and it goes into effect July first. So just for some information, and we can provide this to you, it's live data, all the pieces. So that's it. Just add, please.
Any other questions for the council? Counsel Dr. Hunt?
Yeah, I think that we should join with other communities and raise in the, now, now, what do we have now, an ordinance for that?
Currently, there's a regulation, and if you would like Counsel Dr. Hunt to refer
I think, you know, I don't know, how many thousand, we got fifteen thousand kids, at least in our schools, and I think that's at least that we can do as councils to help the parents to keep the kids who smoke, and just to raise the age, make it a little bit harder, so the eighteen-year-old kids that they go in school with can't buy the cigarettes, but the younger kids that are freshmen and sophomores, so I think it's a, you know, a positive step in the right direction. I think that we should all get behind that. Like, I have this formal motion, I need to make that, leave for some reason to read.
Formal motion to refer to the ordinance.
Yeah.
Motion made. Second. Any discussion on the referral of the study to look at increasing the age of tobacco sales to twenty-one? Counsel Lozey?
Thank you. I want to thank Counsel Trahan, I think it's exemplary thing to do, look into this, and hopefully we'll get in line with those who need this here. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I just may for the chair, on discussion of that motion, I would just like to also, on behalf of the city council, thank the young women from Girls Inc. and their mentors for the wonderful presentation. I know they've put a tremendous amount of work into gathering statistics and educating young people, and you are true leaders among your peers, and we're looking forward to great things from you. And I'd just like to point out that it's fascinating that a group of very talented young women were able to give a presentation in front of a group of young, talented men, and that's very nice to see that the future is bright in the city, so I'd like to give a round of applause for you. Counsel Dr. Hunt, second. Unless there's any further discussion, will we roll call?
Counsel Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Palucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sia.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford. Absent Counsel Lozey. Yes, Counsel Annette.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan. Yes, ten yes.
Thank you very much. We have one more presentation, we believe, of Lynn We Care. Is that on, are there folks here to give a presentation on that as well? I believe that was the issue. There was a presentation earlier at the auditorium, provided from the organization of Lynn We Care, so we thank them for also their involvement with many, many folks in the, in the community. Communications.
We have two communications from our honor, the mayor, like, if we separate them, we can be back here together.
Not a problem, separate. Okay. First of all.
First communication, I hereby appoint Justin Sacco, 699 Boston Street, to the Lynn Municipal Finance Corporation. The term is effective immediately and will expire September first, 2018.
So which is the council? Motion made second. Is Mr. Sacco, to the audience, by any chance?
He is not required to be present.
Motion is made seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Palucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sia.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford. Absent Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
And the second communication, dear counselors, I hereby appoint Mr. Jared Carroll to ten Martin Road to Lynn Disability Commission. Mr. Carroll's appointment is effective immediately and will expire by June ninth, 2018.
Which is the council made to prove second, Mr. Carroll, present today, is not required to be here. Motion's made seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Palucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sia.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford. Absent Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
Public hearing.
Public hearings, we have two. The first one, petition to James Real Estate Trust, Kate Triana and Donald P. James, with permission to change use of space to Autoboy Auto Repeal Shop at 69 Madison Street, without operation Monday through Saturday, seven AM to six PM.
I open the public hearing for those who wish to speak in favor. Anyone who wants you to speak in favor? Anyone who wants you to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those who wish to speak in favor. I open the public hearing for those who wish to speak in opposition. Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to petition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, I'm going to close the public hearing for those who wish to speak in opposition. I will close the public hearing. Counselor Capano?
Yes, I want to make a motion to approve this with stipulations that, this is a big building, so a good spot of this with a big apartment lot, so no work can be done in the street, but I'd like stipulation that no work be done on the seventy-nine Madison Street side of the building, that absolutely no work be done on the street, and that they abide by all the rules and regulations and wishes of the building department. and wishes of the parking department. And I'd like to give the owner, talk to the owner. I went down there and looked at the spot. And it's completely fenced in and away from... There's no residential houses in the area. And there's plenty of work that can be done along the lots. Big parking lot used to be a factor. So I'd like to make a motion to approve with those stipulations.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded with said stipulations. Any discussion? Seeing none? We'll call.
Council Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Council Kehl?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakoudas? Yes, Council Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seh? No, Council Ford? Absent. Council Lozey? Absent. Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Drahan? Yes.
Next public hearing?
Petition of ITAL Model Company Incorporated, Antonio Laniro, for permission for an electronic sign at 500 Lindway.
Open the public hearing for those who wish to speak in favor. Anyone who wants to speak in favor? Anyone who wants to speak in favor? Seeing no one who wants to speak in favor. I'm gonna close the public hearing for those who wish to speak in favor. I'm gonna open the public hearing for those in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one in opposition. I close the public hearing for those who wish to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. Council Capano?
Yes, ITAL Model's been in business for many years. Antonio's a respected businessman. They want to upgrade the sign. They want a new modern electronic sign. And I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? We'll call.
Council Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Council Kehl?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Council Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford?
Absent.
Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Drahan? Yes. Yes, 10 yes.
We have two public hearings to be set down. I'll read them together. And if you have any objection...
Madam Clerk, question, point of order with the petition, the second petition regarding, I guess, the commercial space conversion into apartment. Council, before we now... Is there an opinion whether or not it should be?
To set down? I think we have...
Any communication?
...how many days to set it down at this time to hear it?
No communication for the council?
Well, they're not... They're just told to set it down in the public hearing at this point.
Objection? We'll take them all together? Motion, yeah?
Petition of Free Cash and Social Club, Maran Valley Railway, for permission for a social club at 39 Buffett Street, with hours of operation, seven days, 6:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Petition of Lynn Liquor Mart Mayak Hotel, for permission to convert upstairs commercial space into an apartment.
Which is the council?
The council.
Made to set them down and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Unfinished business, I believe, Council Capano has a motion.
Yes, I would like to take off the table.
Would you like me to read that, Council?
Madam Clerk, we'll read. The petition to be taken off the table.
Petition of El Tropical Restaurant for beer and wine sales in existing restaurant in 429 Lindway.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to deny. A motion has been made to take off the table first. I believe it. But, right. Motion will be made to take off the table. Second. All those in favor say aye. Both of the ayes have it. Council Capano, motion denied. Motion is made to deny the petition. Is there a second? Motion made seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? We'll call.
Council Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Council Kehl?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Council Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford?
Absent.
Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Drahan?
Yes.
Yes, 10 yes.
Your reports?
Council Lozey?
Yes.
Council Lozey?
Yes, I'd like to take off the table the petition for 25th quarter load. 25 motion to take off the table.
Motion is made to take off the table. Second, although if there's an aye opposed, no. The ayes have it. The better is taken off the table.
Then, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? We'll call.
Council Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Council Kehl?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Council Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford?
Absent.
Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Drahan?
Yes.
Yes, 10 yes.
Any other unfinished business? 1, 2, 1, 7, 0, 6, okay. All right. Committee reports.
Ways and Means Committee. Do you want me to read them together?
No objection. We'll read them all together and ask for one vote. And I believe there's an emergency as well requested.
Order that the city control of the N is hereby authorized to take the following actions. Transfer the sum of $729,748.00 from the free cash account to the to be determined municipal Landway account. Transfer the sum of $100,500.00 from the reserve account to the Harrington and Quonery ARP accounts. Transfer the sum of $50,000.00 from the reserve account to the Financial Software account. Transfer the sum of $1,542.57 from the city council expense account to the city council payroll account. Transfer the sum of $34,410.00 with $15,000 for parking payroll salary account, $5,000 for parking payroll overtime account, $13,000 for car dollars expense account, $1,410.00 for car dollars expense to parking expense outside professional.